I would like to welcome everyone to the November 14, 2016 legislative session. I would ask, first of all, that you turn off your electronic devices that make noise. If you have to take a phone call, we ask you to please do it outside the chambers. If for some reason there's an emergency during the meeting, please exit the room, make a left and a right, and go down the stairs. If that exit is blocked, please go out and make a right and down the stairs. If you need assistance for any reason, please let us know, and we'll be happy to help you. Do not use the elevators in case of an emergency. I always walk the stairs because it's... They're laughing because I don't. Okay. Pastor Bill Cropper is unable to make it this evening, so if you would, we will take a moment of reflection. Thank you. Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation.
We do? Good evening.
Good evening.
The proclamation that I'll be reading tonight is in recognition of a day that we've celebrated for many years here. Mr. Ierthyn, how far back did you say we've been doing this?
Five.
But a really important proclamation recognizing our small businesses in this community. So bear with me as I read through this, and then I want to remind everyone about a special day coming up. So whereas the United States Small Business Administration reports that there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, and responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years, and whereas small businesses employ over 49% of all businesses with employees in the United States, and whereas consumer polls in the United States indicate that 89% of consumers agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, 87% agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States, and 93% agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their communities, and whereas Salisbury, Maryland supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November 26, 2016 is Small Business Saturday in Salisbury, Maryland, and I encourage and urge our residents to get out and shop in small businesses, small locally owned businesses in Salisbury. So that is a wonderful thing. I encourage you to get out and shop Saturday. I'm sure some of you, some more than others, are going to see a lot of shopping on Friday. Mr. Boda, I'm looking right at you.
I'll be hiding.
Understood. However, on Saturday, we do encourage folks to get out and support our small businesses. You know, throughout the city, we have an incredible, incredible base of locally owned small businesses, and again, we encourage everybody to show them their support, and remember that those dollars stay locally, and we absolutely find them to be critical to our economy. As we've added jobs, I often get, when people ask, where are they? What's the company that brought them here? A company didn't bring them here. Many companies, by adding one or two jobs, have allowed for our growth over the last couple of years. So we're very excited about that, and I want to acknowledge for a second, Laura Kordakowski, our business development specialist, will, with her team, be over in the downtown visitor center on Small Business Saturday. We've got a couple of things we're excited about. There will be, if you have a receipt from a small business downtown, bring it to the visitor center, and we'll have a calendar, 2016-2017 calendar available for you. There'll also be a discount on merchandise at the visitor center, 30%? 30% discount? Anything else you want to add, Laura?
Yeah, this is something we've been doing for a few years, just trying to boost the downtown neighborhood. I know a lot of the businesses sign up, some of them last minute, and offer some really great deals, so I'm really just encouraging everyone to come out. That's all I've got.
Great, thank you. So again, we'll be supporting businesses throughout our community on Saturday, November 26. I encourage you all to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My wife will definitely take part. I can almost guarantee it. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Ms. Boda, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion now to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson and Mr. Boda.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Nichols, how are you?
Fine, thank you. And you?
Good.
On the consent agenda this evening, we have the October 10, 2016 regular meeting minutes, the October 17, 2016 work session minutes, October 17 closed session minutes, and October 24 regular meeting minutes. We have Resolution Number 2690 approving the appointment of Billy Earl Amos to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending November 2020. Resolution Number 2691 approving the appointment of Maureen McNeil to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending November 2020. Resolution Number 2692 approving the appointment of Shilara Sesums to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending November 2020. Resolution Number 2693 approving the appointment of Reverend John Wright to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending November 2020. Resolution Number 2694 approving the appointment of Amy Zaprowski to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending November 2020. Resolution Number 2695 approving the appointment of Dylan Prochniewski to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending 2020, November. Resolution Number 2696 approving the appointment of Joanne Morissette to the Election Board for term ending November 2022. And Resolution Number 2697 approving the appointment of Jonathan C. Pilcher to the Central City District Commission for the term ending November 2018. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you.
I will now call the vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Mr. Nichols, was it, yeah, could you ask them to stand? There's a lot up here.
Yeah, I'm going to read them, I'm going to attempt to read them off, so bear with me. If, when I call your name, if you're here, please stand. Billy Earl Amos, Maureen McNeil, Shilara Sesums, John Wright.
Reverend Wright sends his apologies for not being here.
We'll forgive him for that. Amy Zaprowski, Dylan Prochnicki.
I'm his mom. He's a hospitalized grandmother in Washington, D.C., so.
Where he should be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, glad you're here.
Thank you very much. And Joanne Morissette, and Jonathan Pilcher. Thank you very much for your commitment. And the good news is that you've been appointed, and for the Human Rights Commission, Mr. Ierthyn will be our representative on that commission. It was his initiative that got this whole thing going, and we want to thank him again for that. Very positive thing. So congratulations. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the award of bids.
So moved.
Mr. Ierthyn?
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Good evening, Mrs. Miller, how are you?
Great, thank you.
Good.
The first award of bid is for Contract 110-17. It's a belt filter press rehabilitation. Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to approve a purchase requisition for the rehabilitation of two belter filled presses at the wastewater treatment plant. Alpha Laval Incorporated is the original equipment manufacturer of this brand named press, which is clam press, and most of the replacement parts are proprietary or patented. Other vendors cannot offer Alpha Laval replacement parts. Therefore, repairs and refurbishment of said belt press can only be made by Alpha Laval as a sole source provider of parts and services. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: It's when contracts for professional services or for personal services requiring special training or skill are needed. The Procurement Division has obtained a sole source justification letter from Alpha Laval which describes in detail their relationship to clam press and that of OEM replacement parts. The total cost for the reconditioning of the two belt presses, including parts, the labor for removal and installation, and the inbound outbound freight charges is $309,000. There are sufficient funds in the account noted in your packet to make this purchase. Procurement Division requests council's approval to award Contract 110-17 Belt Filter Press Rehabilitation to Alpha Laval Incorporated an amount of $309,000.
Any questions? I just want to make a note that I have no questions. I got way too much information the last time I asked about this, if you remember. So I'll explain to you later, Mr. Boda, so you don't want to know now.
But it is an essential city function.
It is an essential. Yes, it is essential. Okay. I'll call the vote on the award of bid for Contract 110-17. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you. The next award of bid this evening is for Contract 105-17. That's a recycling collection truck. The Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to purchase a recycling collection truck through Houston Freightliner utilizing a cooperative purchasing program, HGAC Buy. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: Contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation therefore allows the City of Salisbury to participate in cooperative purchasing activities such as those from HGAC Buy. The Houston-Galveston Area Council is a unit of local government and a political subdivision of the state of Texas. All products offered through HGAC Buy have been awarded by virtue of a competitive public process. The contracts then awarded by HGAC Board are made available to local governments nationwide through the HGAC Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program. The City of Salisbury has previously purchased items utilizing this program for the execution of an interlocal contract, which shuts out the conditions, requirements, and process of the procurement. The Procurement Department has verified the contract pricing, terms, and conditions with a representative from HGAC Buy. There are two contracts noted, HT 06-16 and RH 08-16. Those are the HGAC contract numbers, and there are sufficient funds in the noted account to purchase the requested truck. The Procurement Department requests council's approval to award Contract 105-17 to Houston Freightliner in the amount of $136,757.
Any questions?
Mr. Council President, I may have missed something. I know that the truck is in the budget. We passed it in the budget, but for some reason, I remember nothing about something called HGAC Buy in all my... I don't remember ever going through HGAC Buy. Could you just give me a little background?
What kind of background do you... We, when you were...
It's in Texas, that might do.
Yeah, so they're a unit or subdivision of local government.
So is it like when we piggyback on the state?
Yes, yes, that's exactly what we're doing.
Right, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of Contract 105-17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next is an award of bid for Contract 102-17, Lemon Hill Standpipe Rehabilitation. The Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Public Works Department to solicit bids for this contract. This called for the surface preparation of the standpipe prior to application of a protective coating to the interior and exterior surfaces. Additionally, the new city logo will be applied to the exterior. The attached memo from the Department of Public Works also discusses how the lead paint on the standpipe will be addressed. The Procurement Department followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in The Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of five vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of October 24, 2016 at 2:30 p.m. Manolus Painting from Baldwin, Maryland was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and reference checks yielded favorable results. The Department of Public Works wishes to award a contract to Manolus Painting in the amount of $83,750, which will include all work as noted above, plus add alternate item 106, which is the use of a fluoropolymer urethane exterior finish in lieu of the finish specified in the base bid. Funds are available in the Lemon Hill project account as noted in your packet. The Procurement Department requests council's approval to award Contract 102-17 to Manolus Painting in the amount of $83,750.
Questions?
I was just going to ask Mr. Council President, there's a huge difference between Manolus at $145,000 and Worldwide Industries corporate at $430,000. Were they going to do all the standpipes in America for $430,000? Is there anything, is there something different about what they were going to put on that Manolus was going to put on? I mean, let's also say this, I think we should all go out and have a party that the standpipe is getting painted, and that is a testament to our mayor and his intestinal fortitude after at least 200 years of no water being in the standpipe. And so I was just asking if there were, was there a reason for the huge difference?
Where was the discrepancy, sure. So I do have a copy of the bid tab with me, okay, and that shows me a breakdown of how every item on the bid was bid. The largest discrepancy between Manolus Painting and Worldwide Industries, is that the one? Is in item 104. It's how they chose to bid on the exterior surface cleaning, preparation, and paint finishes. Whereas Manolus Painting bid $63,750 for that line item, Worldwide Industries bid $231,640.
So the difference is in the preparation work, the cleaning, the...
In the surface...
And if Mr. Stevenson were to go clean it, it would be much cleaner than if I went and cleaned it, I think we...
For far less.
For far... So that's...
That's in there, yeah, that's just how they did it differently.
Do we have any idea what the timeframe is once we award it, as to when they would start, so that we could alert the, you know, historic district and the Newtown neighborhood, and so that we can make this a... This should be a huge event for us.
Sure, hang on a sec. Mike, do you happen to know what the notice to proceed is listed as?
It was a 120-day contract period, but this is going to be weather sensitive, so the notice to proceed will probably be delayed until we get into some warmer weather.
Kind of like paving.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I'll just make a comment. I think Mr. Jim Trader would be happy as well.
Yes, he would, wouldn't he?
This was one of his things that I think he was, for years.
We should also go and check if that little monument we left for Mr. Trader on Mill Street is in good shape, too, while we're out.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, I'll call the vote now on Contract 102-17. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is an award of bid. It's change order number four to RFP 07-12. That's the Cody Cox Branch Flood Relief and Drainage Improvements. The Procurement Division received a request from Public Works to process change order number four in the amount of $36,400 for RFP 07-12. This change order would provide for additional inspection services and a time extension. Additionally, this current change order will serve to correct a typographical error in change order number three, whereas inspection hours were noted to have been increased to 1,130 hours rather than by 1,130 hours. Again, it was just a small typographical error. It did not affect how anything was calculated in that previous change order. Funds are available in the project account that's noted in your packet. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number four as noted above to A. Morton Thomas &amp; Associates in the amount of $36,400.
Questions? I have one. What is the, when's the go, go, go date to get it completed?
Oh, wait. The go date like...
Like yesterday.
The end of the... Oh, for the date of substantial completion, is that what you want to know?
Yeah.
I have it on here, it's April 5, 2017.
Can't come soon enough. Okay.
Weather permitting.
So would West Road and that area still be blocked off up until then?
No, they have West Road right now for that work that's in West Road with the culvert, and then there'll be the continuing work that'll continue down towards Cody Cox with the other crossing at the shore stop.
Okay.
So it'll proceed in phases.
I just need you to know in case I may ask about...
Right.
Okay, I'll now call the vote on Contract 102-17, change order number four. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item this evening is an award of bid for RFP 07-16 Legal Services. The Procurement Division received a request from the Administrative Department to solicit proposals for RFP 07-16 Legal Services. The Procurement Division followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in The Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of three vendors submitted a proposal by the due date and time of Friday, August 19 at 2:30 p.m. A four-person evaluation committee comprised of City of Salisbury employees reviewed the vendor proposals and ranked each on a scale of zero, which is unacceptable, to four, superior, according to the evaluation criteria established in the RFP and which is detailed in the attached departmental memo. Cocke, Brennan, and Maloney was determined by the evaluation committee to have presented the best proposal due to their experience and resources, qualifications, clear understanding of the work required, duties, and a competitive hourly rate fee schedule. Upon council award of the, excuse me, upon council award, the procurement office and the administration will execute a contract to specify the start date of services, the term of the agreement, and various other details necessary for a smooth transition into a service arrangement with the firm. The Procurement Department requests council's approval to award RFP 07-16 to Cocke, Brennan, and Maloney. An exact award amount is not specified at this time since the services will be on an as-needed basis and are expected to begin on or after January 1, 2017. However, the funding for legal services is budgeted in the noted account, which is for the city attorney, and I've also noted the FY '17 budget amount in your packet.
Questions?
Mr. Council President, do we know if there's one particular attorney at Cocke, Brennan, and Maloney who's going to be doing the work for the city?
I believe we do. It's Mr. Sullivan, is it Sullivan? Yes.
Is he the only lawyer that's going to be doing work for the city in that law firm?
I think we, I think we were told that there are two assistants, Laura Hay and Ashley, I always get the last name wrong, Boche, something like that.
Are they attorneys or are they legal?
Attorneys. Attorneys.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of Contract 7-16 for legal services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'll abstain. Yeah, I can.
You can't abstain.
I'll say aye then.
Okay, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
You're welcome. The last item this evening is a declaration of surplus and award of an exclusive negotiating period for Contract RFP 13-15, the rebid disposition and development of parking lot number 10. In June 2016, the City of Salisbury Procurement Department issued a solicitation for redevelopment proposals of parking lot number 10 at the request of the Administrative Department. This parking lot is located between Salisbury Boulevard and Poplar Hill, Poplar Hill Avenue in downtown Salisbury, and is bordered on the north by Court Street and on the south by Calvert Street. It's currently used as a public parking lot with 245 spaces, 168 of which are permit-only and 72 are metered. The Procurement Department issued a solicitation on June 30, 2016, and received two proposals by the due date and time of Friday, August 19 at 11 a.m. The proposals received were from Salisbury Development Group and Deverco LLC. An evaluation committee was formed comprised of City of Salisbury staff members that reviewed each proposal and scored them on the following criteria, and I've noted that criteria in your packet. Each weighting factor received a score from zero, which is unacceptable, to superior of a score of four, and then weighted and resulted in the following overall score. The proposal from Salisbury Development Group received a score of 3.48, and the proposal from Deverco LLC received a score of 2.41. As a result of a favorable recommendation from the evaluation committee in regards to the development proposal received from Salisbury Development Group, the Administrative Department wishes to secure a declaration of surplus for parking lot number 10 from City Council.
Questions?
Just, I'm searching through the agenda, and the scoring, and if I've missed it, please somebody tell me, the scoring that you all did is not included here. It's just a memorandum from Mr. Stevenson, and then...
It's included in my...
Is it included in yours? Am I scrolling the wrong way?
You think Mike's been going past it.
Okay, all right.
It's kind of at the bottom of my page.
Yeah, it's there.
It's at the bottom of page 65.
65, thank you. I appreciate it.
Right before the weighting chart.
For some reason, you know, it comes up on the side of what page you're on, which doesn't sometimes correspond with, and that may be what my problem is. I apologize.
If you go to this, this view, it'll show you up on the top.
So you said 68?
65.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I zoomed past it.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote on award of... If not, I'll call the vote on Award of RFP 13-15. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Council President, just as a point of information, is there a council rule that Mr. Rudicel was not able to abstain during his vote of the, of the award of bid?
Yes, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if, as long as he has enough information, significant information to make the decision, then he cannot abstain. Is that correct? Going to the charter?
I'd have to look and see.
We've got to check.
I, 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 there's a perceivable conflict of information. I mean, I have a conflict of interest there. I've had several dealings with that firm through my employment, and we aren't necessarily...
So, you're claiming a conflict of interest?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be a reason.
Okay.
Clearly, he's entitled to that.
Okay. If that being the case, since this is the first time it's happened while I'm here, what's the procedure? The vote is changed? To 2-2?
To 2-2.
Was it an abstention?
Yes.
Okay, which means that it fails. Okay.
Could we, just as to educate all of us, get that part of the charter email too, just so we can see it? Because I didn't realize that there was something in there like that, and then I'm not sure the legal for abstentions and things like that.
I'm not aware of that either, so I would have to check it.
Okay.
I can't remember where it is. Maybe in the...
Is it in council rules of order?
Could you investigate that and give us an answer next time?
If it's an ethical issue, that...
Well, that one, yeah, that one, but I think he's, he's asking for the other, he's asking for the general.
I will provide whatever else.
I think there, yeah, there may be some ethics issues that need to be discussed, but we should probably discuss those in closed session.
Yeah.
You know, given, I think there were some things that were discussed in closed session that need to be discussed again.
Okay, so we'll refer it back to closed session?
Back on the closed session agenda, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. That's what we'll do.
Closed session tonight for a moment.
We have it.
We have it tonight.
We can do it tonight.
And Mr. Council President, I was just going to ask a question about the, about parking lot number 10. I know I was more apt to put the cart before the horse with pictures of new things that are coming, but this is a city asset, and it might be a good idea if we could give the public an idea of what the initial proposal is for the development. That's, sometimes it's in the agenda, I mean, sometimes it's in the packet, sometimes it's not, but I just thought maybe it'd be a good idea if we began to at least show the public what this particular company is suggesting that they'd like to do there, if that's possible.
I don't think at the time of entering into an ENP, sharing the award or sharing the bid packet makes much sense, but maybe at the end of an ENP, when we enter into a land disposition agreement?
And then they would come and make a presentation, right? We'd have them in a work session, and then they would...
Okay.
Could we make them all aware that how long this will be in transition?
Yeah, I think we can do that publicly.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
How long this will be in transition? How long this will take?
It's in, it's in, yeah, it's six months.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, could the public know? Would the public know this?
I believe it's going to be stated, it's coming up next, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2681. Second, Mr. Boda, Mr. Ierton.
Mr. Council President, in the past, we've done these together. I don't know if the council would entertain considering Resolution 2862 as well. One is the public hearing, and the other is accepting the annexation plan. I can do it either way.
Let's do them individually.
Okay. Sure, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Resolution 2681 proposes the annexation of land into the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury. Subject property is the current site of West Salisbury School. It includes approximately 14.2 acres and is located at the intersection of West Road and Adventist Drive. The intent is to demolish the existing structure and rebuild it. In order to get water to the site, the property has to be annexed into the City of Salisbury. Currently has sewer service. As a result, a petition for annexation was received on January 15th, 2016. It would appear by our review that the petition meets all of the requirements of law. This annexation will be known as the West Salisbury School West Road Annexation. The zoning classification will remain residential, R8 residential. Under current law, the council must convene a public hearing. This resolution establishes a date for that hearing, and that will be December 12th, 2016, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Again, that date would be December 12th, 2016, 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Resolution 2681 establishes the date for public hearing for the West Salisbury School West Road Annexation.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution 2681, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2682. Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. Taking in consideration the information that I shared on the previous resolution, Resolution 2862 has the effect of approving the annexation plan. The plan includes provisions for items such as, but are not limited to, land use, roads, police, fire, stormwater, waste collection, et cetera. Plans in the packet, if the council would prefer, I can share some of that information, but it was discussed in the work session.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the motion to approve Resolution Number 2682. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2698. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton.
Thank you. Mayor and council have determined that city-owned property should be surplused. The city this evening declared Municipal Parking Lot Number 10 surplus. Under Section SC 16-8 and Chapter 2.36 of the code, the city has the right to sell surplus property and make awards that are in the best interest of the city and its citizens. The city has determined that it should sell Municipal Parking Lot 10. The city advertised for proposals for the purchase and redevelopment of Lot 10 three times, those dates being June 30th, 2016, July 2nd, 2016, and August 19th, 2016. Two responses were received. After careful consideration, the city selects Salisbury Development Group LLC, selling price of $50,000, following the execution of a disposition contract with terms acceptable to the City of Salisbury. This disposition contract must be agreed upon by May 14th of 2017. This resolution, again, 2698, authorizes the mayor to enter into an exclusive negotiation period with the Salisbury Development Group LLC. So, again, the date is May 14, 2017.
Any questions?
Just quickly, could we talk about how the $50,000 number came about?
That was the offer.
The proposal.
That was the offer?
Yes.
The proposal from them was $50,000?
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for approval of Resolution Number 2698. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Before we go any further, our delegate, Mr. Carl Anderton, snuck into the room, and we just want to recognize him and thank him for all he does for us, and we're getting close to legislative session. Get, rest up. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2402 for the second reading. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman, good evening.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 17 budget to appropriate funds for street maintenance, whereas the City of Salisbury contracted work and requested Salisbury University to install sidewalks along the roadside in Howard Street, whereas the City of Salisbury Engineering Division and Public Works Department utilized citywide concrete contract to perform the sidewalk work, and whereas Salisbury University reimbursed the city for actual expenses to install the sidewalk, and whereas the Engineering Division budget should be increased to accommodate these efforts, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, sees fiscal year 2017 budget and Engineering Division's street maintenance budget be hereby amended as follows, with an increase in the miscellaneous revenue 01000-456911, account by $21,752.75, and increase in the street maintenance of 31000-534318 by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance Number 2402, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance Number 2403. Second, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2017 general fund budget by appropriate funding back to the Downtown Visitor Center, whereas the city has received unpaid revenue from the sale of merchandise at the Downtown Visitor Center, whereas the city believes that reinvesting these funds back into the department, whereas the city has received $754.56 for merchandise sold during the period of August 19th, 2016, through October 13th, 2016. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget being is hereby amended as follows, with an increase in the marketing by $754.56, and that's account 11600-555512.
Any questions?
I was just going to add, Mr. Council President, then Ms. Kordikowski will now feel the ire of all the department heads who watch all of their extra money go back into the general fund. If hers comes back to her, congratulations, Ms. Kordikowski.
Thank you for pointing that out to all the rest of the department heads.
They're all watching it.
All right, any other questions?
No, just, they got some great shirts down there, the calendar, some other items that are down there, so I bought a couple shirts there.
And it's 30% off on Small Business Saturday.
And I may need to come and get another hat because I can't find mine.
It's Christmas stocking time now, right?
That's right, good point. All right, I'll call for approval of ordinance Number 2404. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2403.
2403, what did I say?
Four.
Oh, I'm sorry. 2403, that's my fault.
Aye.
All those in favor, we'll do it again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2404. Second, Mr. Boda, Mr. Ierton.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2017 general fund and the capital project fund in order to appropriate funds for radio communication system, whereas the City of Salisbury has been informed by Motorola that parts for existing communication system will be difficult to procure, and whereas the City of Salisbury has determined a new radio communication system is needed, and whereas the City of Salisbury has an opportunity to piggyback with Wycomico County on the purchase of a new system, and whereas the City of Salisbury has received a quotation from Motorola for a new radio communication system in the amount of $1,432,838.13, and whereas the City of Salisbury's projections conclude that there is more than $500,000 in budgeted salaries that will not be required due to unexpected vacancies, and whereas the City of Salisbury has determined that 500,000 of the expected savings and police department salaries should be used to fund part of the new radio communication system, and whereas the city has determined an additional $425,448.13 required to fund the new radio communication system should be funded using surplus, and whereas the City of Salisbury has determined that the remainder of $507,390 required to fund the new radio communication system should be funded using available bond proceeds, and where this ordinance will authorize the temporary use of surplus until the reallocation can be completed by bond counsel. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's FY 2017 general fund budget be amended as follows. General fund decreased police department budget by 500,000, increase current year surplus 01000-469810 by 425,448.13, increase current year surplus 01000-469810 by 507,390, increase the debt service and other uses by $1,432,838.13. General capital fund budget increase transfer in general fund 98017-469313-48033 by $1,432,838.13, with an increase in capital outlay radios 98117-577031-48033 by an equivalent amount.
Any questions?
For the edification of the public, this is one page and a lot of money, and I know we talked about this in closed session, but I thought it might be important to go through each of these numbers, and either the mayor or Mr. Stevenson or, well, Mr. Finance is not here, so it might make it easier for us all to understand if one of those just walked through where the $500,000 come from, where the allocation of the bond proceeds come from, and where the surplus is coming from.
Sure. Give me one second. Okay. So, let's start with allocation of bond proceeds. Actually, let's start with the budget amendment. The budget amendment is moving dollars that are currently in police salary. We have some vacancies, and those vacancies are slow to be filled because of the training pipeline for police officers. So, every year, we historically have several hundreds of thousands of dollars left that go into surplus from that line, and that's just because there's attrition every year, and it takes time for those positions to get filled, unlike positions in other departments which are rather rapidly filled. Moving on to reallocation of bond proceeds, one of the things that shows up in our audit, or has historically almost every single year, is one of the notes, and you don't want notes in your audit, one of the notes is that we have these small amounts of money left in a variety of old bond proceeds, so all the way from 2002, I believe 2002 is the oldest?
Three.
Okay, 2003 is the oldest, all the way up through 2012. And so, this takes small amounts of those projects which are completed, and just has dollars left in the accounts and moves them back into, it reallocates them essentially into a project that we now need to complete. The third piece is a use of surplus, and surplus is, we actually got some great news about our surplus this year. In seven years, over the last seven years, we have, we have had eight, well, six years excluding this year, a total of about a $250,000 use of surplus. Some years, we use a lot of surplus, some years, we give some money back to surplus. So, a total in six years, we used $250,000 of surplus, and that's of $8.8 million in unrestricted surplus. This year, we returned a little over that, a little over $270,000 to surplus. I was going to talk about this Thursday, but I'll talk about it now. So, some money goes back into surplus, and so it's basically a wash over seven years. So, we occasionally allocate funds from surplus through budget amendments or through planning for the use of surplus in our budgeting process. So, this is an amount of money, $425,000, that would come from... So this is an amount of money, $425,000, that would come from surplus. So this is a project that we certainly have planned for. It is in the CIP. It would have remained in the CIP except for that, with the reallocation of bond proceeds and with some extra money found in the salary savings, we've got an opportunity to get on it right now. The other piece is that this is, if it was a standalone project, a four to five million dollar project. The alternative way is to go the way that we're going, which is with the county, which we anticipated to be a $1.5 million project. By doing it now, it was about a $1.28 million project, and with some cost expenses related to actually executing it, rises to about $1.43 million. So by doing it now, we save money. If we wait until next year, it's going to be 1.5 plus those costs of actually going through, using bond counsel, going through the process of issuing, and it arises to about... And bond counsel, not because we're issuing new debt, we're not, we're paying cash for the system, but bond counsel, because the reallocation of the bond proceeds takes a particular specialized attorney, bond counsel, to go through that process.
So it is safe to say that Chief Duncan won up Laura Portokowski by approximately 400,000?
Well, I'd go beyond that.
That money would go back into surplus that was in her line for salaries, so we're putting it back in there for the radios.
That's right, and we would spend this money next year.
So she really did beat Laura Portokowski in the league.
Frankly, frankly, by about $3 million, because if we didn't do this, this way, we'd be spending, you know, replacing all of the radio communications equipment for all police and fire agencies around the country is mandatory. Everyone's doing it and everyone has to do it because the federal government has mandated it, and so we're switching over to, I guess, what you'd call a digital system from an analog system?
Yeah.
So federally, everyone has to do this, everyone's having to spend this money. The question is, do you want to go with the federal government or the state or standalone, which is going to be more costly, or the route that we've, you know, the opportunity we've got right here, which is less costly and now, which is, you know, you can imagine a sale that says, you know, pay cash now and, or, you know, credit later, and there's a cost associated with that. So the cash now ends up saving us in the long run.
I will just add that I have an aversion to budget amendments and use of surplus, but I will tell you that from strictly a business point of view, the return on this investment is pretty significant, so I have no issue with it, but it is, it is going to save us a ton of money, so.
If we could, Mr. Council President, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this, but as I said to all of you previously, I really feel that things like this as we go into these partnerships with the county, that if it's possible with our next work session, if we can get an update on the fire service agreement and what the county is doing to repay us the money, we, I just would appreciate that.
That is on your council...
It's on the calendar.
That's terrific. I just, I'm saying that I have consternation over this vote because of the amount of money that I believe is owed to us that I think would pay for this three and four times over. I'm going to vote for it because I support Chief Duncan and our officers. I hope that they are well aware of the amount of money that has been spent over the last five years in terms of the number of officers that they have been allowed to hire. They are, you know, our biggest expenditure in the budget, and I hope that they, that they see this investment in the, in the department and that, and that it is my hope that we are continuing to work very hard to recoup some of that money that the county is owed to us in the other area. Thank you for the time.
Any other comments, questions?
And I can turn with Mr. Ierton's sentiments as well.
Okay, I will now call the vote on ordinance number 2404. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Mrs. Nichols, do we have any public comments?
No. We do not.
Mr., come up.
Mayor and council, my name is Edward Lee. Mr. Ierton raised a very interesting question tonight, and on parliamentary procedure, I would ask, and I was going to ask you after the meeting, but I think that there are people probably in the audience that would also like to know the answer to the question, because as I sat here and listened, this could be significant in any crucial matter that would come before this council in terms of ultimately, and not being an expert, but having, you know, dibbled in some of this in the past, it's a very, very interesting question.
Which question? Could you just clarify for me which question?
I wasn't sure which one I asked, Eddie.
There were several of them.
I apologize, I thought everybody was in tune with me here. The question on, that you raised regarding abstention or on a vote, and I, with you, I had not heard this before, that you have to, or that different municipalities certainly have stipulated, and I would like to know how that, how that laundries with the Salisbury council.
We will let you know as soon as we know.
I understand that. I saw the council over there working on this one.
Yeah, I can just share from my experience as a council member, it's, it's in the council rules that you may only abstain if you have a conflict of interest or if you have not been given adequate information to make a decision.
Right.
So conflict of interest would...
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to convene in closed session.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Ierton and Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now in closed session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.